Good afternoon. We will begin today's meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. And Madam Counselor, do we have need for a closed session?
Yes, we do. Items A and B will be heard this evening, but items C through E will be heard in closed session. I do expect one announcement out, which will be done tonight at 6:30. And the clerk has advised me there is no public comment. So, there's nothing further. We can adjourn into closed session and adjourn.
Very good, Madam Counselor. We will adjourn into closed session and we will reconvene at 6:30 at the Pixley Middle School Gym at 1520 East Court Street in Pixley. Thank you, and we'll see you in a bit.
Good evening. We are going to begin tonight's meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Supervisor Vanderpool in beautiful District 2, followed by a moment of silence.
Please join me in saluting the flag of our great country. Ready salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everyone. And for those of you not from Pixley, thanks for making the trek out. And for those of you from Pixley, thanks for having us. We're going to start off with County Council reporting out on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And for all staff and anyone presenting, I think you're going to have to speak a little louder. These mics don't pick up very well, so you're going to have to talk loud.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm reporting out on item C, the Board of Supervisors directed council to defend and authorize the defense of employee Florente Bambo in McKinney, Elsa et al. versus County of Tulare and Florente Bambo Tulare County Superior Court Case Number VCU 278663. The case is, as mentioned, McKinney, Elsa versus County of Tulare. The adverse parties are Elsa Rae McKinney, Kevin Patrick Kunal, and Mary Eliza Kunal. This case involves a claim for damages for personal injury arising out of a traffic accident involving a Tulare County employee. The roll call vote was on the motion of Supervisor Shacklean, second by Supervisor Valero. It was a 5-0 vote.
Thank you. We're going to take up item number one, our Board of Supervisors Matters, and we will start with District 2 Supervisor Pete Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great to be here in the community of Pixley and in District 2 this evening for an evening meeting. Wanted to go over a few items this week. First of all, wanted to start off by congratulating and appreciating the work that the Tulare County Fire Chief has instituted amongst youth in Tulare County. They're having their second Junior Fire Academy Camp in the community of Earlymark for residents of the South County. That actually is taking place this week from 8:00 a.m. to noon at the Earlymark Park. And thank you very much, Chief, for the work that you're doing to involve members of the community. Tomorrow morning at 8:30 in Visalia at the Tassara Board Chambers will be a meeting of the Retirement Board that I will be attending. The California State Association of Counties will be having its Regional Summit in Fresno this Thursday, begins in the morning and runs through the afternoon. First five will be having a commission meeting Thursday at 10 o'clock. The meeting will actually be at the Parenting Network Office in Visalia instead of at the Board of Supervisors Chambers due to the Board of Supervisors Chambers remodel. Then, this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. in the community of Tipton, they will be having, the Tipton Community Beautification and Historical Preservation Committee will be having its flag raising ceremony at the Tipton Memorial Park. And with that, I want to wish everyone a safe and healthy 4th of July. And the fire chief did not pay me for this announcement, but I will make it anyways. Be very careful with your fireworks. Make sure that there are no combustible materials near them as you set them off and celebrate the independence of our country. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Supervisor Shacklean?
Yes, thank you. First thing I want to say is I would like to encourage everybody, if you have the opportunity, to go to the Health and Human Services Facebook page. There is currently a survey monkey for stakeholders, for a consultant that we have doing some work on homelessness. And so I would encourage you to go on there and take that survey. I also like to say that last Friday, I was asked to partake in the Animal Services Manager interview, so that was a nice occasion to be a part of. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the Tulare County Economic Development Corporation meeting in Exeter. And Friday, at the Lamplighter Inn in Visalia, is the Homeless Heroes. It's put on by the Tulare Kings Homeless Alliance, and it's an opportunity to recognize folks in our community who have, so to say, fought the good fight to try to help with our homeless issue. And then on Sunday, July 7th, since we won't be meeting next Tuesday, I'd just like to say that on that day at 2:00 p.m., I will be attending the Visalia American Legion Post 18, 100th Anniversary at the Visalia Veterans Memorial Hall. That's it.
Very good. Supervisor Valero?
All right. Hello and good evening, everyone. My name, or, sorry. So, good evening. Some of the things that I did last week, and then I also mentioned things that I will be doing this week. So, the first thing is the census 2020. As we all know, it is very important that we have a complete count of our entire county. And so I was able to attend last week at the Tulare County Office of Education. We had a minimum of about 35 individuals around the table discussing some of the concerns, also some of the things that they want to see with regards to our outreach efforts. And so it was really good to participate in that. And we submitted through TCAG, our agency that's overseeing the census, were able to compile a good report to the state. And so I think that we, as a county, will do very well in making sure that our count is good. And so I just want to thank all those involved in that process, and especially our Tulare County TCAG. In addition to that, I was able to meet with the Executive Director, the new Executive Director of CASA. And so he expressed some of his concerns about low volunteer, the low volunteers that he's seen within his organization, and so working on ways in which to encourage greater number of individuals that are willing and able to support youth and children in the court system. And so it was a good discussion and things that we will continue to work on. I was able to attend the Summer Night Lights in Woodlake last week. And so the city of Woodlake does a really good job of partnering with local agencies, and they have pool nights. So, they are able to go to Woodlake High School and be in the pool. And so it attracts and draws a lot of youth. And so it's always great to be there and see the level of excitement, but also keeping students off the streets and in a space in which they are welcomed and supported through various activities as well as food. I will be attending the Summer Night Lights in Orosee, that is tomorrow. I'll also be attending the CSAC Summer Regional Meeting in Fresno, discussing economic opportunities and development. That's on Thursday, where our very own CAO, Jason Britt, will be on a panel discussing ways in which to reach out to our workforce. In addition to that, I will be going to a Bitwise Industries meeting in Fresno, and that is for Mothers Who Code, a group of women who learn about tech, building websites, and being able to engage in the tech industry. And they're also starting up a program for single mothers. And so being able to go out there and see the work that's being done to support single mothers and women in the tech industry. I will also be attending the Homeless Heroes Luncheon this week. I will also be at the Summer Night Lights in Dinuba. They have an awesome farmer's markets every Friday in their Entertainment Plaza, and so I'll be there supporting that. On Saturday, I will be attending a community cleanup in Wilsonia. That is a long ways away from my home, but within the district. And so I will be there helping with their community cleanup. And then I will be participating in our Step Up Advisory Meeting next Tuesday, along with another Step Up event in Orosee, and it's one of the biggest that they have throughout the summer. And lastly, I'll be attending the American Legion Celebration as well at the Visalia Veterans Building next Saturday. So, that is all I have, Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few things just to report back on. On Wednesday, the 19th, I was happy to be a part of the contingent that went to Sacramento to meet with our Secretary of Natural Resources, Wade Crowfoot, along with our CAO, along with the chairman, and our Director of Water Resources. And we had a really good meeting with the secretary. I think he heard our concerns over water, over tree mortality, biomass, getting into biomass, fuel reduction up in the forest. And so I was pretty encouraged, I think everyone was that went up there, that maybe we made a little bit of impact by going there. And also, the chairman had a chance to spend some time prior to that at the RCRC convention. So, a good time last Wednesday at the Capitol. Thursday, had the Ag Business Lunch in Porterville, a monthly Ag Business Luncheon, a chance to network with a lot of people working in the ag industry, and a lot of those that are interconnected outside of the ag industry, but all of our jobs kind of depend on ag anyway. So, it's just about everyone in the surrounding area. So, that was a good time and great pork chops. Friday, the 21st, was able to give a welcome to the California State Association of Counties class that was held in Visalia. And there was a good amount of people in attendance, over 50 people attended to talk about thinking strategically for the future of Tulare County. So, I was happy to welcome that group to the county. Yesterday, Monday, had a chance to meet with the Tulie River Indian Reservation with the Tribal Council, and gave a 20 or 30-minute just discussion of things that are going on in the county, and things that are going on with me personally as a supervisor for the district that the tribe is in, that the reservation's in. And we had a really good dialogue and have some partnerships coming up that we're working on. So, did a little brainstorming after the presentation yesterday. And tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the Mighty 190 Committee that is looking at economic development along the Highway 190 corridor, running all the way up into and across our mountain communities. So, that'll be an interesting discussion as they're still, as they're getting that off the ground and still coming up with some good ideas of how to market the area, how to brand the area, and how to open it up to bring more tourism into the area. And this Saturday, the 29th, up in Springville, the Springville Rodeo Young Guns, that's the Springville Rodeo Foundation, is having a dinner, that's an annual dinner for fundraiser. And we will be up there attending that with them. It's always a fun time, and that's a really strong, powerful group in the community, very, very much focused on the rodeo and on continuing that tradition for years and years to come. On Tuesday, the 2nd, I'll have an opportunity to speak to, again, up in Springville, up to the Lions Club up there. They call themselves the Springville Mountain Lions. So, be able to give them a county update up there and also bring some things back, their issues and their concerns. And that's about it for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'll just want to touch on a few meetings that happened last week, as well as some things upcoming this week. As Supervisor Townsend mentioned, I had the opportunity, as along with our CAO and Supervisor Townsend, to meet with the Secretary, the California Secretary of Natural Resources, Wade Crowfoot, last Wednesday afternoon. As Supervisor Townsend said, I think it was very productive. Some of the feedbacks that we were given as homework was that we need to be ready for the Safe and Affordable Drinking Water Fund with projects to be able to maximize the use of those dollars and be one of the first to get dollars out into our communities. So, I know staff is working on that and have been ready to go. So, as soon as the governor signs that portion of the budget, then we can be ready to work on utilizing those funds. And that, as what the legislature and the governor agreed upon is about $150 million over the next 11 years to fund Safe and Affordable Drinking Water Fund with no new taxes and no new fees. So, it's very positive for our area, where we've, almost all of us have communities that will benefit directly. And even if Visalia may not have a direct benefit, there's still a lot of ancillary benefits to helping out these communities. So, that was very positive. And on the, another side note, we talked a lot about forest management and forest health, and the secretary is very well up to speed, maybe even more so than some of us as far as on forest health issues. And so he's very engaged on those topics. The other part is that they're asking for, really, they're looking for local solutions to minimize the economic impacts for the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. So, how do we still have to implement SIGMA and reduce groundwater pumping, but have the least amount of impact to our local economy? And they're looking, they're open and they're looking for solutions. So, I know I was working on some points, and I'm hoping that we can funnel that around to other counties and local water agencies and stakeholders to see if we can't get some momentum and hopefully have the governor and his staff push that through to help, again, minimize the economic impacts to our area. Last Thursday, had a San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Board meeting in Fresno. Just one of the highlights is that we approved no burning, no burning at all for fireplaces or outdoor burning for targeted counties. So, counties where they have the most amount of air quality, PM 2.5 issues. So, that was not Tulare County. However, my understanding is that we're fairly close, but Fresno, Kern, and Madera, I believe, were the three counties that were impacted with that ban on burning. So, that, there would, there's a, if you don't have access to natural gas, then there's some exemptions, but essentially that there's, it's a tighter restriction on burning, and the idea is to try and help our public health situation. Last Friday, as part of the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, I also was up in Balch Park filming a commercial, so I'm going to apologize. I'm not sure how they're going to utilize me, but if you're watching the airways, I apologize for whatever you might have to see. But I want to thank John Hess, our General Services Agency Director, and Neil Pilliard for making Balch Park accessible to us. The park looked great, even though it's closed for overnight stays. I think there were 20-plus individuals fishing in the lower pond, so the lower pond's still open and still available, and it looked great up there. So, I know they're doing a lot of electrical work, and we could see that. So, kudos to the General Services Team and Parks Team for working on that aspect.
I hope it's not during the dinner hour.
Yeah. It might. I will also be attending the CSAC Regional Meeting this week. Yesterday, I had a East Coia Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting. And the update I want to give there is that we're, all of the GSAs are making progress. We're moving towards getting our groundwater sustainability plans in place, which will ultimately be the roadmap to farmers and communities as far as how much they can pump and where they can pump, and building more water projects to help bring in additional surface water. And so, for the East Coia, it's looking, it's, every local region is really different. And for the East Coia in particular, their gap is fairly minimal. I mean, we're looking at less than 30,000 acre feet to manage as far as what our shortfall is. And depending on the management area, the management area where I'm in, I think we have a 14,000 acre foot surplus. So, it really just depends on where you're at. But again, working on coordination and doing regional projects to help everyone out. And then lastly, this Thursday, Southern California Gas Company is coordinating with some nonprofits, a press conference in Fresno, and they have invited myself and other county supervisors from throughout the San Joaquin Valley, just to emphasize the benefits of renewable natural gas, something that we're seeing in and around this community of Pixley, but elsewhere as far as utilizing methane capture and being able to put it back into the natural gas pipeline and be able to use it for any of our domestic uses as well as commercial. And so having that choice, having options, natural gas is cheaper than electricity. And so for every one of you and for myself, if you have that option, it's always a great option to be able to have that. And so they're asking that the California Public Utilities Commission take that into consideration, that it's the most affordable option on the table, and making sure that those of us in rural areas continue to have options. With that, that's going to conclude my portion of Board of Supervisors Matters, but I do want to thank some of the Pixley Middle School staff for setting up tonight and really helping with this process. And even though they haven't worked directly with me, I know they've worked with our clerk and with her staff quite a bit. And so Teresa Lewis, Robin Broverman, Joel Munoz, and Eric Quong, thank you if you're around. We appreciate, it's great, it's fabulous, and we love that the AC's working great. So, thank you for setting it up. That balloon's for you. You're a star, Amy. With that, that'll conclude our Board of Supervisors Matters, and we'll move on to public comments. I have several requests for public comments. If you wish to speak and you haven't filled out a little public comments form, I'd ask that you fill one out. And do we have some in the back or up front? We have both in the back and then front. And then if you could just turn them in to our clerk over here to my left, that would be great, just to help make sure that we get everyone that wants to speak. I'd ask that you try and be as brief as possible, as well as not be as repetitive, if you are willing to speak, and just to be respectful of everyone's time. So, with that, I will go ahead and call up Ms. Suzanne Gundy to begin. If you could please state your name and address for the record, that would be helpful.
Yes, my name is Suzanne Gundy, 201 West Whiten Dale Avenue in Visalia. I guess that's it. I'm here, as you can see, on behalf of the union and on behalf of county employees. I was a county employee from 1977 to 1998. I loved it, and I was booted out, but you know, that's how it works, old regime. And I had the good fortune of being promoted up to Program Manager, and I managed a number of grant programs for our immigrant communities and for our high-risk communities. So, like Teen Parent Program, Southeast Asian Program, et cetera. But what I wanted to say is that as a Program Manager, we had a position that had not been created yet. And I am proud to say that I was the creator of the Community Health Technician. It's always been hard for Tulare County to recruit and keep public health nurses and social workers, and we needed people who could go out in the community, speak the languages of the different communities in the county, and be able to be knowledgeable about all the services, refer people, transport people, coordinate with people, and be kind of like a mini public health nurse. And we had a crew of more than 20 people at one time. They spoke Spanish, they spoke the four Southeast Asian languages, and I did a lot of training with them, so they knew all the programs. Everything was very well coordinated, and I'm not sure how HHSA does it now, but I'm sure you're making good use of these Community Health Technicians. But what I wanted to say is, these are high school graduates who are excellent communicators and know languages. They were fairly low-paid positions, and their children were all on Medi-Cal. This is 30 years ago. And now, in 2019, their children are still on Medi-Cal because they make maybe $15 an hour if they've been around for a while, and they cannot afford to put their families on the county's health insurance. Not only do we need more than a 2% raise for everybody, we need to redo the county compensation chart so that these very talented people are paid what they are worth and compensated so that they don't have to go on public services. They're out there trying to get other people in the county on public services, and they have to use them themselves. So, that's my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have is Tabitha Gomez. Please state your name and address for the record. And just for, as Tammy Marroquín will be next.
Tabitha Gomez, 3500 West Mineral King, Visalia. Good evening. If you guys remember me from last week, I presented to you guys on the challenges of the county and what we're facing and how it's impacting the community. I wish I was here thanking you guys for addressing these widespread concerns and challenges. Instead, it's been noted by your county negotiating teams that you've authorized them to make no further changes to your proposals. The general fund continues to have a surplus, which it's done for the last five years, and we, the county, continue to fall further and further behind neighboring counties when it comes to pay rates, you know, and our statistics. And us responding to children, you know, providing the services to the community, we keep on falling behind. We're in a time that economy is experiencing a boom, and yet the county workers are being left behind. The county can afford to make the necessary investments to properly care for our community, our children, our homeless, our elderly, but by not doing so, you're putting those vulnerable populations who depend on these services to survive at risk. We want to partner in finding long-term solutions, but in order to do that, we have to have your commitment to invest in our workforce. Today, I stand here and turn to you guys for your support. Support the needs of our workers, support the needs of our community, and also support the reputation that Tulare County is going to have. Because I personally don't want to be a part of a county that is 16th and 13th worse in the state. I want to be a part of a county who is one of the best, who were not failing our children by not responding to their needs, by ignoring the fact that they're being abused, they're being neglected. We need to see those children. We need more workers to be able to do that. Together, we can make Tulare County the best place to live, work, and raise our families. And together, we can make sure that we are not neglecting our children in these vulnerable situations that they're in. And so I just ask that you reconsider the negotiations that you have allowed the county to make and that we can move forward in trying to find a solution to our issues and our statistics and make the county better. Thank you.
Thank you. And after Tammy will be Esther Camacho.
Hello, my name is Tammy Marroquín. I am a self-sufficiency supervisor with Tulare County. I've been with the county for 17 years. I am a member of the SEIU 521. I'm here today to stand with my fellow coworkers who care deeply about the challenges that our community faces, but to see them struggling to provide for their own families as well. Tulare County is seeing a need for growing, I'm sorry, seeing a growing need for services, but we're not seeing the same growth in our staff. We currently rank one of the highest in the state for residents receiving CalFresh benefits, and almost half of our county is receiving Medi-Cal benefits. This is a clear sign. This is a clear sign of the need for our services for our community. I see the faces of the families that are struggling, and it hurts to see and to know that my peers and my coworkers are facing those same struggles. We have quite a bit of staff that also receive benefits, and there's no shame in that, but that's just a reflection of the pay that they receive. This year, I made the choice at open enrollment to drop my family from my insurance because I could no longer afford it. The cost of living is increasing every year, however, our wages do not keep up with that increase, and that's just with rent and utilities. It's just hard to imagine how that's possible. As elected board leaders, you should take pride in making Tulare County the best place to work, but it's not what many of us are experiencing. In July, we will continue to increase the wage gap between our neighboring counties. On average, we are earning 9% less than our counterparts, and that does not include the challenges in the healthcare premiums. The stagnant wages and unaffordable health insurance plans are hurting our families and hurting the ability to provide the best care possible for our community. We're counting on you guys to make the proper investment in the workforce. That's long overdue. Thank you.
Esther Camacho, and then next will be Eddie Martinez.
I'm Esther Camacho. My address, 264 North Del Maine in Porterville. Hello, members of the board. My name is Esther Camacho. I'm a Self-Sufficiency Support Assistant 2. I have been with the county going on 13 years, and I'm a proud SEIU 521 member. I would like to share with you that it is a shame that county employees like myself can't utilize our healthcare insurance due to the out-of-reach costs associated. I live in contact doubt, knowing that at any moment, my husband can have a medical emergency and my insurance will not cover it. This is unacceptable. It should upset every person in this room to learn that, like many of my coworkers, I have utilized medical benefits to provide proper care for my family. Does it bring pride to this county, knowing that many county workers have to rely on public assistance just to survive? You have the authority to make a necessary investment. We need to ensure we can provide quality care to our residents and support the needs of our families. We are worth more than 2%. Our community is worth more than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Martinez, and followed by Eddie will be Rebecca, and I'm not sure about the last name, but you live in Dinupa, so that narrows it down.
Good evening. My name is Eddie Martinez. I work with Child Welfare Services. I've been doing social work for about 12 years. I've been with Child Welfare Services for about three years in an emergency response. I'm here today because, I mean, we've been experiencing a lot of high caseloads, and when there's a lot of high caseloads, there's always a fear with social workers that because we're not able to respond in time, is that one of these children might be continually neglected, continually abused, and even might even die. And that's a big worry when we have these caseloads. We're always experiencing them, and there's nothing that the county's really put in place yet to, when we have these high caseloads, we just keep on getting them, getting them, and getting them. And it's just, there needs to be additional staff to support us. There needs to be support from our management team, from our director. Okay, so one of the things I have to say is, since I've been here, I mean, I've seen a lot of good employees leave to other counties, to better-paying jobs, because of the benefits that we have, because of the pay, because we're outdated. Something that really got me to this point is, when I was on call one day, I had to go out on a call, I had to detain a couple of children. I have four kids I had to detain. I had to keep these kids with me for four hours at McDonald's and in the parking lot because no supervisor would go to the building with me to be there with me. So I was with these kids in a car for four hours. I mean, that's unacceptable. I mean, we've addressed that. The county's trying to put something in place that gives us all access. I mean, this is something that should have been addressed a long time ago. So that's really unacceptable that we find ourselves in that position. So we need real solutions to protect these vulnerable children and families that we have in our community, and it starts with attracting and retaining good, quality employees. And you're going to do that with better benefits, with better pay, and additional staff. We need additional staff in Child Welfare Services. I mean, I'd like to see all my coworkers throughout the county get better pay. I mean, I'm fortunate that I do have a better half. I don't have a problem with the health insurance, but none of my coworkers should be experiencing that issue when they're working with the county. So, you know, by not investing in public services, we continue to put the response support, mental health services, and the child protection that the community needs. Tulare can't afford to start making investments for our community, and it's up to each of you, I mean, to start supporting this, making those efforts that we're making, support our efforts. We want to make this a great place to work, a great place to live, a great place to raise our families. I mean, and some of us are doing quite well, but there's a lot of families out there that we're not getting to on time, that we didn't get there, we need to make a difference before it's too late. Because you don't know how it feels when you have a referral sitting on there for two months, three months, when we're supposed to be responding in 10 days, but we don't get out there for months. And knowing that this kid was being abused or sexually abused all this time, and if you could have got out there sooner, you'd have been able to stop some of those episodes from happening, but since you didn't, here we are. I mean, they were traumatized more than what they should have happened. And it's just, it's unacceptable. I look to all you to make, really think about the next budget that you guys put out. Hopefully you guys support, put support in the areas that are more needed than others. I would really like to see that. That's my time. Thank you.
Rebecca, and then we have Amanda Dix after that.
Rebecca Navarro, sorry about my writing. I've been employed with Tulare County Child Welfare Services for over 18 years, and I'm reading this letter on behalf of a coworker who was not able to make it. She writes, "Thank you for listening to my story. I apologize for not being able to be present at today's board meeting. I am a single parent and a social worker with the county for a little over two years. I have two amazing children, ages five and 10, and I am financially unable to add them to my county health insurance due to the tremendous amount that is required to be paid out to include them on my health plan. It is upwards of $600 out of my paycheck. Up until yesterday, Monday, June 24th, my children had covered California. I received a letter stating they were no longer eligible, which is unfortunate because my income will take a huge hit by adding them to my county health plan, which I will be doing, excuse me, which I will be doing because they are important to me and their health is of utmost importance to me. I will be struggling to make ends meet and meet the needs of my children when $1,200 a month will be taken from their day-to-day needs. I am pleading with you to reconsider the county health plan for your employees and their dependents. Thank you. Signed, Maria Aguilar." As I read this letter, I'm asking you to look at the children behind me. These are all county children, county workers, and a lot of these children fall into this category, a lot of these families fall into this category where their parents are not able to cover them on their health plan. So look at their faces, because in the end, those are the children that are being hurt. And also in closing, I'd like to thank all those who signed the letter as seen in this banner right over here. Thank you.
Amanda, if you could pass it to our clerk in the blue blazer. Thank you. Next we have Amanda Dix, followed by Josette Elizaldi. Apologize if I mispronounce the name.
Hello. My name is Amanda Dix, and I am a social worker with CWS. I reside in Visalia. I've been, I have been with Tulare County for 18 years. My first manager was Jason Britt in Porterville when I was an eligibility worker. The manager that hired me for CWS was John Morrow. Today I'm here to provide a list of current vacant positions to report on Medi-Cal applications that exceed the state requirement and have taken more than 45 days to process. I have information that Tulare County budget costs for SEIU represented positions, a list and report on salary averages compared to our five neighboring counties, which indicated we are underpaid. I'm here in solidarity with my fellow coworkers and union members because I have chosen to invest in this county with my life because this is what I want to do. I want to retire out of Tulare County, and I've never been an active member of this So I am here to give you those documents, and just to let you know that I was raised in Bishop, California, much different place than here, much different economy, but I came to Porterville because my family is from Porterville. My mom works for Porterville Library. My nephew is under the Fresno Diocese. He's about to be a priest. And my mother works for the Porterville Library. I'm tired of how I'm being treated, and there is constant pressure. I am experiencing PTSD from the things I see. Most days, I can't even take breaks because I am having to prioritize the lives of the children on my caseload because I know that even though something might happen to them that has nothing to do with me, if it's my name on that case, it affects me whether I place the children there or not. And I have nightmares from the things I have experienced only in the last year, and I have to take my benefit time to get therapy through the EAP program because I'm not allowed to flex that. So, please, I have worked with the court unit, I have a reputation with the judges, the attorneys. Ask them, ask them who Amanda Dix is, and they'll tell you, the community partners. You don't want to have to see the things that we see, and you don't want to have to deal with the things I'm dealing with right now and still trying to go to work every day and function. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Josette Elizaldi, followed by Joy Hilty.
Hello, my name is Josette Elizaldi. I am a social worker with Child Welfare Services, and I live in Porterville, California. I am up here, I was not going to speak today, but after hearing everybody speak, I thought I would at least come and show support. I've been an employee of Tulare County for 22 years with Child Welfare Services the last five years. I used to be proud to be an employee of Tulare County. When somebody asked me, "What do you do for a living?", I'd be like, "I work for Tulare County." Now, when people ask me what I do for a living, I tell them, "I work in an office," because I'm embarrassed to tell them where I work, and that shouldn't be. Right now, I don't have statistics, and I don't have things fancy, anything, flip charts to show you, but what I do show you is that all these people behind me right here, these are your employees. You're the Board of Supervisors, correct? And what you do is run the county, but you need people to run the county for you, correct? You need people to open the buildings, close the buildings, process applications, you know, help people, do home visits and stuff like that. This back here, this is your staff. These are the people that you hire to do all those things. And right now, they don't feel that you're taking care of them, and it's really hard to do what we do, day in and day out, but I've been here 22 years. It's because I love my job. I love what I do. I love being a social worker. I love, I don't love the pay, I don't love, but I love what I do. But you guys are losing good workers. You're losing seasoned workers, experienced workers. If you look at the stats on the turnovers and how often people leave, people will come to our county, get training for a year or two, they'll go to the neighboring counties because they get better pay than we do, they get better benefits. But what would you do if you woke up one day and all of these people were gone? Who's going to serve the community? Who's going to open those doors for the WIC, for the clinic, for Child Welfare Services? Who's going to do those investigations for child abuse if these people don't get up in the morning and come? They come because they love what they do. If they didn't, they wouldn't be here. Everyone thinks they come, "Oh, because they need a paycheck," and they're going to continue to need a paycheck, and that's why they come. They come because they love what they do. And if you guys understood that, respected that, we wouldn't be here fighting for more than 2%. I'm worth more than 2%. They're all worth more than 2%. Thank you.
Next is Joy Hilty, followed by Jessica Lopez.
Hi, my name is Joy Hilty. I have only worked for the county for a year. I did work for, or I'm a registered nurse. I worked for CUEA Delta for 21 years and Alameda Health System Oakland Bay Area for three years. I say that because the county is a really wonderful place to work.
Could you please address the board?
I'm sorry. So far, the county is a really wonderful place to work where I'm at, and I really appreciate working there. Medical benefits were a little better at the other places I worked. Vacation was a little better. Pay was definitely better, but I'm not working for the county for pay. I'm working the county because unlike CUEA Delta, even though it wasn't a problem for me, they're at-will. So anytime, for any reason, they can let you go. So anybody that's behind me that thinks that the county is a bad place to work, I'd like you to maybe think about it again. I'm not a stranger to adversity. I've had a hard life, some of it very hard. You just have to handle it and get through. I do have a little email from an county employee, actually it's a text. She is a county employee. She says, "At the last bargaining, we got 3% one year and 2% the next because we needed more county employee involvement." I had shared with her that I'd heard that there were pink slips about 10 years ago because the county couldn't afford a lot of the people, so they had to reiterate. So I suggested to her, "I think you should consider the amount of the money that it costs the county and the taxpayers." And I told them about the last time the union pushed, the county had given a good portion of the staff pink slips. I'm not interested in that happening again." And then in her response to the 2% and 3% raises, I said, "Have you considered perhaps a higher increase in pay for performance? That way, those who do a good job could get paid more and feel good about it. The inflation rate was 1.9% in 2018. Therefore, county income increases were in accordance with inflation. I think that employees should advocate for increases for a job well done. Employees can complain to HR regarding favoritism, and do that if that's what you're worried about. Like I said, I worked for CUEA Delta for 21 years, and the county is much more sensitive to employee needs." There is one more thing, except I forget everything now because I'm getting older. And it's just, it is a good place to work, and if you have a good heart and want to work there, I really encourage you to find the attitude. I do agree that there are some things that can be done better, but at the same time, I think that the county is a great place to work for if you want to help and support others. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Jessica Lopez next, and I don't have any more cards, so if you're interested in speaking, I believe we still have cards, public comment cards in the back, if you'd like to fill those in.
I'm going to tell you a story about a little girl. This little girl, her odds of survival was very little. She grew up from nothing but rags, and her light was very dim. She was placed in foster care, and her light just grew dimmer and dimmer. I am Arielle Lopez. I have got adopted by one of the coworkers here that worked so long for you. It is a blessing for me to have a mother, but it was very difficult for me to see my mom go through all of this for you guys, for the opportunity that they have been placed for you guys. All I ask is to have... you guys. All I ask is to have my mom back. She comes home stressed. I would love to tell her about my day, but I know I cannot because she has homework that she has to call. It's very hard for me and knowing that I'm a house set of five others. She has adopted me and four other boys from the foster care program. And all I ask is to listen out and to actually know what they're saying, to actually hear them out and say something. Because what had happened was, all of them, I thank all of you guys, I had no leadership. I had no leadership in my life. And because of some of the people on this team, because they are, they're a team. When they work together, it makes me happy. It makes me want to come to their meetings and join them. It makes me want to put on this Pride of a Shirt. It makes me want to come out here and be one of them. One day, I wish, one day, I hope I could be in one of their office emplacements. But all I ask is to hear them out and truly know what they're saying and truly see the signs that we made, had, that we made. And all I ask is just hear them out. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Any other public comments that are on issues that are before this board but not on today's agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to our consent calendar. Items 5 through 38. Item 28 is pulled off calendar. Staff, did we have any need for corrections or any other members of the board? Is there any item which should be pulled or any comments which should be made by any other item? Members of the public, any item on the consent calendar wishing to be pulled or questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, if there's nothing to be corrected from the consent calendar, I'd move for approval. There were a couple of items from the RMA portion of the meeting. Those are going to be highlighted in RMA's presentation. So I do not need those to be highlighted separately.
Very good.
But otherwise, I would move for the approval, less item 28.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, a second by Supervisor Shucklian. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the vote?
Supervisor Crocker.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we'll take up item 3, our first public hearing for tonight. Request from the Resource Management Agency to receive a Community Facilities District Report, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Mr. Bach.
Chairman Crocker, Board CAO Jason Britt, Counsel, I am Aaron Bach, RMA Assistant Director. And before you today is the Community Facilities District 2019-01.
And the public hearing is now open.
Thank you. Related to public services and specifically the Anderson Village annexation, a special election for the landowners, the CFD ordinance and levying of special taxes. This process is necessary today as the final map is also being approved today. And the map requires financing in advance of the subdivision agreement approved concurrently with the map. The CFD is the long-term guarantee of the financing. We are today receiving RMA's CFD report and through this action taken by this Board of Supervisors, formalizing the resolution of intent and implementing the goals and policies we presented to this Board last time on May 21, 2019. The formalization and implementation is in the form of the approved resolution of formation and establishing the ordinance levying the special tax lien. The Board is also fulfilling the petitioner's request to form the Anderson Village CFD through the resolution, calling for and declaring the ballot and results of the special election, which were yes, to have these properties taxed at the special tax rates to cover the necessary long-term services provided to this development. This will not be the end of the process. The county will waive the second reading on July 9, publish the ordinance, and record the tax lien. And most importantly, we will record the tax lien. Working with the county tax collector, RMA staff will also need to, within the next coming year, implement the Anderson CFD to establish a tax rate area through the State Board of Equalization and formalize a tax sharing agreement with the City of Kingsburg and to establish the funds and processes to gain funds through the developers to keep the CFD whole. This completes staff's report. And I also have the consultant, Nathan, and Jim Robinson, the developer, if you have any questions. But we are looking for a recommendation of approval.
Any questions or comments from members of the Board? This is a public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the Board.
If there's no further discussion, I'd move for approval of the formation.
Second.
We've got a motion by Supervisor Townsend, second by Supervisor Shucklian. Any further questions, comments? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Supervisor Crocker.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. And the public hearing is now closed. Now we'll take up item 4, another public hearing. Request from RMA to adopt findings to amend Section 18.7, Foothill Combining Zone B1.
Chairman Crocker, Supervisors Aaron Bach, Tulare County Resource Management Agency Assistant Director.
And we've got to wait until your mid-sentence.
Thank you. Thank you. This one's much more simple. This is a zoning ordinance amendment to Section 18.7. It's another step in streamlining the building process in Tulare County, especially in the Foothill Combining Zone, where we have received many complaints about our process. This is to reduce the site review requirements that plague many architects, developers, and contractors, including the installation of ground-mounted solar projects, to have to go through the expense and time for what should be just the submittal of building plans, especially when there are five structures or fewer on the property in the PDFM zone. We have received questions by commissioners, staff, and residents over the years as to why this process exists. This item was brought forward by an applicant who was having difficulty seeing why they would have to come up with $3,500 for a barn on their site. And staff has received over 17 inquiries and have confirmed with multiple landowners that this item was going to allow projects to move forward to building permit without any additional process. Therefore, staff respectfully requests that the Board adopt the findings for approval consistent with the Planning Commission's recommendation. And that completes staff's report.
Very good. Any questions, comments from members of the Board? Supervisor Vanderpool.
Mr. Chair, just a question that I have is, this item is specifically dealing with the foothill area of the county, which is a significant portion. But would you just comment on the number of projects that we typically see that would fall under this actual zoning requirement?
Well, just to answer your question, there are 17 cases we have right now.
So I got the 17. I heard that in the presentation. But is that just currently that will benefit? Or is that, I mean, have you had people come and not want to even pursue it because of the fact that there was such a cost entailed in this?
Yes.
And you see much more coming once we do get this in the books?
Very easily, the numbers double. And so there's another 17 who have not applied because of this process.
I'd like to make a comment.
Supervisor Townsend?
Just a comment, not really a question, but since you were looking at me the whole time you were saying that. Being in the foothills, being an architect. No, this is one that I see. I was really happy to see that on there because I've seen it time and time again, working in these zones in the county. And it just makes all kinds of sense to speed that process up and to allow, you know, up to the five accessory buildings. You're looking at places where you have shade structures and barns and horse barns and hay barns, all kinds of things. So it makes a lot of sense. I'm very supportive of it. Thanks for bringing it forward.
I was just going to say, we shouldn't make it that much easier for architects, but it's all right.
Well, that does take a little bit off our plate. So that's a negative.
I had a few questions and you answered a couple of them in your presentation. So what's the current practice? Any type of accessory building has to go?
Once we get past a secondary accessory structure, basically, it has to go, we usually send it to a project review committee first, where you see sometimes some tiers. And then it goes to the formal process of the Planning Commission on a simple site plan review, which is really just looking at the zoning and the setbacks and everything else we can do through the building permit.
So the third accessory then triggers, and this would be the sixth that triggers it?
Right. Correct. And in the PDFM zone, it's easy to get four or five.
Okay. As far as the active cases that are there, would this be retroactive? Where whoever's existing has projects in the queue, would that go back and help them?
We've been anticipating this. So the ones in the queue are moving forward to building permits as we speak. So there are not projects in the queue, so to say.
Okay. And what about the valley floor? Is there any proposal or discussion about doing something similar in the valley floor? What's the practice currently?
We would be, well, when there are PD overlays, there is the practice to actually go through the site plan review process. But those are fewer and far between compared to the PDFM zone, which is the majority of the foothills. So ultimately, we'd like to get to a point where we can update our zoning code to address all those cases.
Very good. I appreciate the proactive look and, you know, being responsive to constituents' needs and desires and making it easier to do their daily business. This is a public hearing. So any member of the public wishing to speak on this item? I said, "Member of the public."
I'm a public employee. How about that? Mike Washam with RMA. I just want to expand a little bit more on it, too. The fact that the site plan, final site plan review, is akin to having to go through the whole special use permit. Really, and all we're looking at is a site review. But what this does also is because it's turned some people off where they build buildings without building permits, and then that becomes more of an issue. So this will help people, encourage people to come in and get building permits to make sure that the structural structures are sound and all of that. So besides the fact of the hurdle, it's going to get better compliance with our building codes. So I just wanted to put that in the field.
And now your foothill range can add accessory buildings without permits. That's nice.
Yes. Please state your name and address. Ms. Gandhi, again.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Suzanne Gandhi from Visalia. I'm not quite sure what is meant by an accessory building. I mean, a hotel would not be an accessory building. A place where several units, up to five, where people would be living, like five apartments, would that be an accessory building? And to me, it seems that there should be, it says in, consistent with the environmental impact with CEQA, the Environmental Quality Act. But I would hate to see up in the foothills kind of a big sprawling thing that would impact traffic and also have a negative impact on the environment. So I'm assuming that all of those things will be taken into consideration, right? I mean, a barn is one thing, but setting up like a resort, is that an accessory building?
That's not my understanding, but I'll defer to staff once you're finished.
You can explain that.
Yes, through the chair. There is other processes that come into play when you have large-scale development, commercial, industrial, or multifamily residential that would trigger use permits in most cases. So accessory structures are anything that requires a building permit, basically, including a shed, so 10 by 10 or greater. We do not go up to large-scale residential development on accessories.
What's the max that would be considered an accessory?
It's based on use. I mean, we could do multiple housing units. But, you know, it's really a determination by the counter itself. But for the most part, anything that's going to be multiple, anything more than single-family residential, anything more than a barn or structure such as a barn would trigger a use permit in the PDFM zone.
So it's theoretical that some type of suite or something could be a granny flap, mother-in-law quarters. That's an acceptable accessory.
That's an acceptable accessory unit.
But not necessarily multiple homes or...
No, no, multifamily residential or not.
Right. Sure. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board.
I'd like to move approval.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Townsend, second by Supervisor Vanderpool. Any further discussion, comments? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Supervisor Crocker.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. And the public hearing is now closed. Next, we'll take up item 39, our first not timed item, and receive a presentation from the Health and Human Services Agency on the Cal-Vet Mental Health Grant and the future service goals of the Veteran Service Office.
Good evening, Chairman Crocker, members of the Board, CAO Britt, Counsel, I'm Ken Crookshank, County Veteran Service Officer. And about halfway through this presentation, I'll be joined by Jamie Sharma, the Unit Manager for Aging Services. So this evening, we would like to update you on some of the successes we have achieved in this year's grant and what we can anticipate for next year's grant. So if you remember, the fiscal 1819 update would be from 7/1 through 3/31, which is the three quarters that we have full data for. And then we'll talk a little bit about what our 1920 award grant was for. And then we want to bring forward the Proposed Veterans Advisory Committee. So if you can remember, the Cal-Vet grant is actually provided through Proposition 63 Mental Health Funds. And it's specifically to the Veterans. Cal-Vet is the one that actually sends it out. In our original grant, it was $40,000. And that was supposed to cover from January, or excuse me, July 1, 2018 through June 30 of this year. And it's also metrics-based. So we had to report back our metrics that we told the state we were going to do. So far, we've done that. In 2000, or excuse me, there was an additional grant given to us in March of $15,000. That was because in January of this year, the state added $1 million to the grant program. That amount was separated throughout all counties in the state. So we received, like I say, the $15,000 with regards to that. So from July 1, 2018 through March 31 of 2019, we had, our office phone calls were 6,493. We responded or sent out approximately 2,290 emails. We had 2,411 office visits. And what we call unique outreach contacts, there were 57. What that is, is if we ran into somebody that was out on the streets or something like that, and they recognized us, or we were actually meeting with somebody and we brought up information regarding our office, veteran services, and stuff like that, that's what we call a unique outreach contact. We do have our other outreaches. And then the claims filed, those are just specific to my two VSRs that are in the office of 1,084. And that's through that period. The total claims that were filed by my second VSR during that period increased our claims by 270 during that time period. Once again, like I say, the claims that were filed were just the two VSRs. If you remember from my presentation last year, I have two other individuals in the office that do do claims, but not to the extent that my VSRs do. We attended 45 outreach events during that timeframe, 27 of which were addressed specifically through mental health. And those were the ones that we could actually identify as Prop 63 monies. There were over 2,700 total attendees with 940 direct contacts at all of those events, all those 45. With regards to the increase, we increased our events for the total of the 45. That was an increase of 20 events from the previous year during that time period. And the total attendees was over 1,500 during that timeframe specifically. And then our direct contacts were over 300.
Mr. Chair, before he leaves that slide, Ken, at the outreach events that you attended, did you attend any homeless, Project Homeless Connect events specifically over the last year as a Veteran Service Office outreach or not?
Can I also add to that really quick?
Go ahead.
Because it's on the same line. Also, in terms of when you do receive the calls, are there outside agencies that are also kind of connecting you with the veteran population?
Yes, sir, there is. And with regards to the homeless, I'll come back to you first. Let me answer Supervisor Vanderpool. Yes, we do... Yes, we do attend certain outreach events. However, we've tried to go to the, honestly, we've tried to go to the homeless connects, but because we aren't able to offer direct services, most times the homeless connects do not, they don't want information and referral at their events. They want somebody that can do something hard and fast, and we're not able to do that at our outreach events, other than a DMV verification, which we do do at a lot of our outreach events.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
For example, like Visalia Rescue Mission or Open Gate, do any of those give you kind of a call in identifying certain individuals that may go through their system to then identify that with the county with us?
Yes, sir. We have actually met with some veterans at Visalia Rescue Mission because they're not able to make it to the office, or they won't come to the office, but they'll meet us at Visalia Rescue Mission. Doesn't happen often because we're kind of on the beaten path for a lot of people where we're actually located. When they find out we're actually there, they just come around the building from the path that's over behind Hyde Plaza, as well as, I have a good connection with the veterans up in Fresno, just drew a blank, I'm sorry. The...
VA?
Pardon?
VA.
No, well, the VA, of course. They're a definite community partner, and I get a lot of outreach from them. But the Fresno Vet Center, we are a huge partner with the Fresno Vet Center. That's one of the things that we're looking at in the future because he's been short-staffed and hasn't been able to do anything as far as utilizing my office, but we've got that in the works. As well as Kings to Lary Homeless Alliance, Dave Manville, who is the Veterans Outreach guy, him and I work very closely, and he's referred people. So yes, we do do outreach and have referrals from the various community partners, San Joaquin Valley Veterans, who is located in Hanford, but they cover Tulare County as well.
When you mentioned the Fresno Vet Center, is that the Veterans Home out there on the southwest side of town?
No, sir. Fresno Vet Center is actually the mental health portion. It was originally, I'll give you a little background on it, it was originally started by Vietnam vets because of the way that they came home and stuff like that. And they are part of the VA, but they're not usually on a VA campus. They're kind of a drop-in. They have LCSWs, they have psychologists, and they work with different veterans with regards to mental health, as well as PTSD issues, military sexual trauma, those type of things which can lead to the PTSD. So that is my community partner with regards to that situation, but I also get referrals through Veterans Court and stuff like that with regards to filing claims. But the Veterans Home is actually a Cal-Vet Veterans Home that's out there. They actually have their own VSO in there.
Okay. Now that we messed up your presentation, sorry.
No, that's quite all right. So our program expansion for next year, what we're looking for is, as you can see, we were awarded $49,000 for the upcoming year, which is $9,000 more than what we have for last year, which is good. And some of the expanded goals that we're looking for for 1920 is to strengthen our collaboration with the local continuum of care on homelessness. And how we intend on doing that is we will start attending the monthly meetings to network with community partners and become the face of Veteran Services within the local housing community. With regards to California Legal Services, I am looking to continue to collaborate with Central California Legal Services to ensure that veterans are a priority population of legal, for legal services they can provide, as well as the Tulare County Public Defender, which they run a Clean Slate Program. And we're looking, I also, I will, I'm going to collaborate more specifically with the administrators of the Clean Slate Project for referrals of veterans who may not want to utilize Veterans Court. And with that, that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to my counterpart over here, Jamie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Jamie Sharma. I'm the Unit Manager for Aging Services with HHSA, and it's our pleasure to also bring forward this evening a proposal for a Veteran Advisory Committee to enhance service delivery and further engage our veteran community for your consideration. The overarching goals for our Veteran Advisory Committee would be to provide a voice for veterans, to provide valuable information to the Department on Service Delivery, to provide the Board of Supervisors with information on program effectiveness, and to provide additional advocacy for local and statewide initiatives. The Veteran Advisory Committee will consist of seven members in total, a Board of Supervisors representative to serve as an ex officio member, five district residents who will be board-appointed having served on active duty in a branch of the Armed Services, and two community partners who provide services to the veteran community. The Veteran Advisory Committee will meet quarterly at minimum with ad hoc committees as appropriate or needed. They will develop recommendations on policy, service delivery, and funding opportunities, and engage in special projects as requested by the board and/or the department. The recommended bylaws for the Veteran Advisory Committee are attached to this agenda item. We've presented them here for the board's consideration for approval, though certainly if you have any requested changes, we can revise them, return to you at a later date. This brings us to the end of the formal part of my presentation, so I just wanted to ask if there are any questions that either Ken or I can answer at this time.
Well, I appreciate you guys bringing this up. I know this is something that I think as a result of attending a Tulare County Historical Society barbecue, that one of the local veteran has came up to me and suggested doing something along those lines, and so that has led to multiple discussions with our CAO and with our HHSA Director, Lutz. And so I appreciate the ability to create a new committee, I think, that can highlight, that can get veterans involved with the great work that you guys do, and I think highlight some of the things that we're doing on a regular basis. I know that the veteran community, I think, recognizes and understands what you do, but I don't know that the greater community recognizes the role that the county has in trying to facilitate and make sure that veterans are utilizing all the services that are available and that we can help facilitate that. So I think this is a good opportunity to make, you know, to do even better ideas, to get additional public input, but just also to highlight the great work that you're doing. I think it's really phenomenal, the work that, at the beginning of the, you know, how many calls you guys have taken, responded to, the emails, the outreach events, how you've grown from year over year. It's really phenomenal, and I, it's not something that we get to interact with a lot. You're a small and nimble group, but the impact is great, so I appreciate that. Any other questions, comments from the board? Supervisor Vanderpool? Just a comment, you know, I think that this is a very much-needed committee. You know, we look at various advisory committees that we've created over the years, and they particularly address an area or a subject of our population that's overlooked and neglected. And I do feel that there are numerous veterans organizations out there, but yet there are still veterans that slip through the cracks. And so as a veteran service provider, I think there are always opportunities for us to connect better with veterans that may already exist in another service offering pool or as a customer within the county service areas already, but maybe aren't necessarily targeted as a veteran. And I think there's always an opportunity for that. So with the collaborations and the contacts that you have, I see this as a great opportunity to further provide services for veterans, and I'm incredibly supportive of it and happy to see that this committee's brought forward to serve as a forum for veterans to talk about needs and to talk about issues that need to be addressed here locally. And I know that there's an ex officio slot on here for a board member, and an ex officio slot's probably the worst possible position you can put yourself in as a board member because you attend meetings and your vote means nothing. Just hurt the cats. But, but, but I will say, it is very valuable, and if no other member of the board is willing to serve, I'd be happy to, but if anyone else would like to or has any more passion, then they're welcome to do so.
Well, your vote's usually not worth anything, so I'm fine with you to be on that committee.
Thanks, Jamie.
No, I just want to add, you know, the same with everybody else, that I support this wholeheartedly. Our veterans are a very special part of our community, and the more that we can serve them as they have served us, I'm willing to support that. I do have a question. I just, I received something in my mail, and there's a, something going on Thursday in Tulare with Cal-Vets about funding coming down from the state for potential veterans for housing and all that. Are you aware of that?
Yes, ma'am, it's V H H P.
Yeah.
It's July, I don't have the date, it's in July, I think it's like the 19th, it's either the 9th or the 19th. I've already printed up my tickets for myself and...
Perfect. Great, thank you, thank you for being there. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Oh, and I'd just like to say, too, I want to thank our chairman for actually bringing this to our attention, and I know that he's worked hard on bringing this to light. And so I was actually surprised when I did get on the board that we didn't have a committee or commission on this. So again, kudos to our chairman for bringing this to our attention. And I also, sorry, but I would also express interest in, should, I guess Pete Vanderpool decide that he would or would not, but I would also like to put my hat as a name as well.
You guys could both go, because your vote doesn't mean anything, so it could be two types of nothing.
Come on, Dennis, you can be there, threes.
I want to just add my support to, able to go to a couple of these veterans' outreaches, and I was very impressed with everything that I saw there, the various organizations reaching out, talking to a few, a few of the people who attended that are veterans, one that I knew, a couple that I knew, one that I know very well. And just to see the difference it makes in their life to know that there's somebody out there that's looking out for them, that's trying to help them find the services that they need, it's a huge thing for them. So what are our, what are the timelines going to be for getting the representatives together and putting the committee together?
Yeah, I look to staff, but I think the five appointments would be based on each of us, so as the bylaws are written, each one of us would need to, you know, advertise and solicit folks that are veterans, and then, as well as the two at-large members. And I know staff has worked with a number of folks, and I think that initially there was, I think the committee was looked at, maybe 15 members, and I think that that's a bit cumbersome at times, but, so I think the idea would be that we would have a committee with seven voting members, but then also make sure that we're inviting other folks that are participating, and maybe participating more or less like at a staff level. So that doesn't really answer the question as far as it goes, but I would think that we'd probably have, you know, a month or two to figure out who those are. Right.
I'll have to be appointments made, and then they can meet, based on, once the appointments are made pursuant to the recommendations in the bylaws.
So we can start looking, and then it'll be posted, and we can reach out at that point, yeah.
Very good. Any other comments, question? So I just add that I'm also interested, and we'll probably have to come back and take a separate action as far as who the board appointment...
I'm happy to have you. This was just something you brought up, so I didn't know that you expressed the interest to serve on it, so I'm happy to have you serve.
At the end of the year, I'm happy to move it along to somebody else and have someone else to get that opportunity. I'd just like to make sure that it's moving in the right direction for a few minutes.
Yeah, so I'm happy to do that.
So any members of the public wishing to speak on this matter? Please state your name and address for the record.
Paula Mastis, 345 South Adams in Tipton. And you're talking about, so the committee, the members, it would be something that would be announced, and you guys would make appointments? How would you choose who you wanted to appoint to it?
Normally, that's an individual decision, and we each have various types of criteria as far as how we, how we look at it, but typically, it's the most qualified people that are interested, able to attend meetings, those types of things.
But how do you find those?
It's a general application, Paula, that you can get actually from our clerk's office in, for any commission within the county. You can express an interest to serve, and there's a list on the website that outlines all the various committees and opportunities, and you can put in that general application and ask for specifics if you would like.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Mr. Chair, if there's no further public comment, I would like to move for approval of this item. Thank you, Ken, for the update, and I would like to designate Supervisor Crocker as the board's ex officio representative whose vote doesn't count. That's right. Beautiful. Not, it's not on the agenda, no appointment on the agenda.
Chairman, if I could just make a comment. Jamie, if we could just clarify, because, for the lady who spoke, will there be a special application for this particular board or committee, or would you, are we using the general application?
We prefer to use the general application, though if that's not what the board wishes, we can certainly revise.
That's okay. I just wanted to confirm which...
Okay. Thank you so much for having us.
Thanks. So we have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Valero. Any further questions, comments? Madam Clerk, will you please call the vote?
Supervisor Crocker.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklin.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll go to item 40. Receive a report regarding public works activities in the community of Pixley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson, Ernie Beltran, Chief Engineer with Resource Management Agency. Today I have here Mr. Johnny Wong, will help me present. We would like to provide you with a public work update on the previous work done in the community of Pixley, along with what we have programmed for next, this summer, this summer and fall, and next year. You know, various type of projects consisting of sidewalks, safe route to school related, safe route to school projects, and road maintenance rehab projects. Over the past year, we have done a great, a great amount of research in the community of Pixley, where road maintenance and improvements requests were often discussed.
Rhonda, will you please shut off your phone? Thank you. Yeah, I heard the meows, the cat call.
The input received from these community meetings were really helpful for us to identify in the identification process for the various capital improvement projects and maintenance projects. These projects range from simple pahoe repairs to blade patch and capital improvements such as the construction of sidewalks facilities, which I'll be talking about later, later in this presentation. With that, I would like to introduce Mr. Johnny Wong here, and he'll be talking about the recently completed maintenance projects, along with what he has planned for the summer.
Chairman, members of the board, CAO and County Council, greetings. Don't come back up here a lot, but enjoy it every time that I am here.
We can make it more often.
Thank you so much. Mr. Beltran has introduced me up here to talk a little bit about maintenance, and that's , so that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to talk a little bit about maintenance, and I have to say with the map that he put up there, it's quite a feat that we've done a lot of things, but not everything is up there that we have done. I do notice that there's a couple more overlays that we did, and of course, we've done a lot of blade patching and a lot of pahoe patching, too. But there is one thing I do want to thank is that my relationship with the town council also. I've dealt with them for many, many years. I've made many good friends, met a lot of council member that has, has been there, some have gone, some have still been there. One is Mr. Ron Pryne, I deal with him quite a bit. It's a pleasure, and I do enjoy meeting a lot of the people that I haven't met there that has to comment, and for some reason, I'm always the popular one. So, but that's okay. I do really enjoy talking to people, and as I go there and they tell me their request, I try to handle it the best that I can. I noticed that yesterday, there was a meeting, and there is a couple of things that I will address, and it's one of my pleasures on doing that. So I'm looking forward to talking with the council and address the issues as they come up. But as we go through this council here, there's a lot of relationships that we made that I have said that I will do certain things, and those promises will be kept. One is just right over here on Pine, between Howard and Court. We will be doing that as an overlay, haven't got to it yet, but don't give up on me yet. We will get that thing done, probably mid to late summer. I'm hoping to get that done soon. And there's a couple of blade patches here and there that the council has brought that up, and I will address those, too. those too. So, anyway, that's just a quick summary of what I'll be doing, but of course, I'm sure there will be more to come, and I'll hit those as we go too. So, this whole thing that I'm talking about is not all about me, it's, Mr. Beltran is going to come back, here I'm introducing him again to come back to talk about bigger projects that he has done in the past, and as you look forward, what he'll be doing in the very near future also. So I want to bring back Mr. Beltran.
Thank you Johnny. As far as the completed projects, I believe you guys have a map there, kind of showing the locations, some of the locations of the bigger, bigger scale project that we've done in the past. A few that I would like to highlight is the Pixley Transportation Enhancement Project. This project was constructed in 2014, provided pedestrian sidewalk improvements along the east side of Main Street between Court Avenue and Davis. This was one of the first projects that we had with this type of funding source, and it was kind of set the beginning for our other project that we want to complete, which is going to be the Pixley Main Street project, which I'll be talking about in a bit. As far as the other project that we want to highlight here is the, it's a Pixley Safe Route to School project, this was one of the fun projects that I had an opportunity working, work with. This was another sidewalk project, provides sidewalk, provides a safe walking path to get from school along Court Avenue, from Pine Street to School Street. The fun part of this project was that this project was actually the first, one of our first projects, you know, first complete street projects. For those of you who don't know, complete streets, it's pretty much a design for everybody, all users, enables all users, including bicyclists, pedestrian, and motoring, the motoring public, so that was, that was one of the nice project, which is outside this building here, wide nice road for everybody. So that was, that was the fun project. The other project that we, we got an opportunity to work on as well was the 2016 Community Transportation Infrastructure Project, this was one of our first projects under the C T I P, the County Transportation Improvement Program that we, that we established. This project, you know, had two locations here, you know, multiple locations throughout the county, but two of the locations were, were in this community of Pixley. The first one being Court Avenue, was pretty much the road we have, you can see the road we have in front of the, in front of the school here, from Park to School Street, and we also had the School Street, School Street improvements, we did some pedestrian improvements, we updated some of the, upgraded some of the non-compliant eighty ramps along that corridor, and we did some surface treatment, some road surface treatment. So those are the completed projects that we had, that we've done in the past, but we also have program projects, and one of, those are the ones that we want to, we want to discuss, I want to discuss with you. This summer, fall, we have two projects that are, that are scheduled to go into construction. We have our Terabella Avenue, the crosswalk project there, that, that's very important for the community. This, this project was brought to, through us, was mentioned to us in the, through the community outreach, and what we're trying to do there is, we're trying to enhance the crosswalk, installed pedestrian activated beacons, you know, make the crosswalk safer for, for the children that cross through the apartment complex on the, located on the south side. That's going to be another project that Mr. Wong will be working on, you know, we're going to have county force crews constructing that project and installing the beacon systems. The other project that I mentioned earlier was the Pixley Main Street project. This one's exciting because this week we will, we're scheduled to get our, our funding allocation for construction with the state. So, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be bringing the item to your board for approval. This is a big project, this pretty much completes the, the whole Main Street corridor, with curb gutter sidewalk on both sides, and we'll also, you know, we will be doing some drainage improvements that are, that were identified through the, through the outreach that we have, that we conducted. This is a big project, valued at 1.4 million dollars, so, in construction, so we're very excited, and hopefully we, we will bring this to you, to the board here shortly, in a couple of weeks. I want to talk about, I want to take a moment as well to talk about S B one, you know, I know that we had an item, item number twenty-seven, that your board just recently approved. We were approving, you approved the, the last project, project number two of the 2019 Road Repair and Accountability Act. There was a series of three projects valued at fourteen point, I believe eleven point four million dollars throughout the county, and we're currently working on number one, advertising project number one, project number three is being done as we speak, you know, with the county forces, and with that project, you know, a little background on, on S B one, I know that most of you guys are familiar with, but some people might not be, the background on S B one is, it's a gas tax pass in 2014, in twenty seventeen, sorry, in April 2017, under state, the Senate Bill number one. It established new funding sources for road repair and other maintenance projects. To receive these funds, agencies have to, got to demonstrate transparency on utilization of the funds by including projects in the adopted list, which we brought to your board earlier this year. This is the third year that we've been, this is the third year we'll be receiving funds, and, you know, project selection, how we select project, we, we pretty much, you know, take input from the community. We, we have a software, payment management software, which helps us identify the, the roadway conditions, and we tend to focus on high-volume traffic roads and farm-to-market routes that are pretty much the arteries leading to the community. That's, that's our focus, that's been our focus these three years. Our first project, where, that we, that we, that we completed, were completed, just recently completed, and it was a project, those projects were valued at 4.5 million dollars. The second year that we received funds, which is this current fiscal year, we received, we're expected to receive eleven point four million, and we anticipate completing these projects this fall, so, like I mentioned, you know, project two was the last project, and we're expecting to complete this fall. Some of the areas that I want to highlight in, some of the projects that I want to highlight in, and some of the stuff I want to highlight for, for the project two, the 2019 Road Repair and Accountability Act, project two, is that this, this was, this project has six project locations for over thirteen miles of roads to be repaired in the southern region of the county, so this is, this encompasses just the southern region of the county. One of the projects is, it's actually nearby here, it's Avenue 120. We're trying to continue our maintenance efforts and trying to, maintenance efforts from, we want to, we want to complete that corridor from State Route thirty-four, or forty-three I believe, forty-three, sorry. To State Route eighty-nine, so we're trying to finish that corridor, that's an important farm-to-market route that we're trying to tackle this, this year, as well as Avenue 144, we're trying to finish 144 just north of that. The next year, next year's S B one project, you know, we also have another project shown on the map, we have for next year's round of X B, the 2020 project, we have a project located along Avenue ninety-six, which is Terabella Avenue, between Cedar Street and Park Avenue, shown there in high and red in your, in your map. And that's pretty much what we have, that's our, that's our work plan for Pixley. We are, we've been, we feel like we've been very successful in this community, securing funding for, for the various type pedestrian projects and safe route to school projects, and we really appreciate feedback from the community and comments received during the previous and our continuous efforts, outreach efforts in the community, and we look forward in delivering these projects. Thank you for the time, and I will make it, I'll open it for questions.
Questions, comments from members of the board, Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Just a comment, thank you for the presentation Hernan, and Johnny, thank you for your presentation as well, thank you for being a regular attendee down here in Pixley, I think it's very important to listen to the community's road concerns, because that is the number one concern here in this community, and whether it's a crosswalk to help the children get to school safely, or it's various road repair issues there may be, even very accessible to them to make those repairs and to hear their concerns. If you look at the large projects, the large infrastructure projects here, I think Main Street is really a, a great poster child for what the county has done in terms of investing in the community of Pixley, and you look at the safe route to school projects, the complete streets, Pixley has gotten a lot of the large-scale investments in the community. It's easy to overlook the, those projects when you look at just road repair type issues and see potholes, but at the end of the day, we have to remember that Pixley is one of, forty different unincorporated communities that has very similar concerns. So I do appreciate the efforts that have been made here in this community, and I do think you can see the benefit directly, whether it's a farm-to-market road or a sidewalk for kids to get to school safely, so thank you very much for your efforts.
Any other comments from members of the board? Members of the public wishing to speak on this matter? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to thank you on behalf, I'm here as a resident, but I'd like to thank you on behalf of Town Council for your generous contributions that you make to them, us yearly, and this all sounds great, I'm so sorry, I'm unprepared, I didn't know about this meeting until last night, but, and all this will be great, and at this time, I'm sure, our main concern and our community's concern has been our, our roads, and they are terrible. Yes, we get them patched every so often, but it's just not enough, is there any way or any time that we're going to get any kind of permanent fixes on our roads? Because the patches that are put on there don't last a couple of weeks and they're gone. The school's transportation department has been to the council meeting and has made their comments as far as to how it affects the mechanism of their buses and their tires and all that, and as well as community members, we all know that it does take a lot of wear and tear, not only on our tires, but on our suspension and all that, and so I would like to see that our roads would be fixed, I mean, I know you can't fix them all, and we just asked that there would be a start, I mean, wouldn't it be better to have a permanent fix that's going to work and stay than to just make little patches that, that do not stay there? They don't last. Not a couple of weeks later, they're the same, and there's several other issues that we have there, I'm not sure if R M A is the one to look about, to contact about that, but there's a sign by the school that has been there for a long time, we have mentioned it a couple of times, and it's a thirty-five mile per hour sign right where the school is set. And sometimes people, cars go by there fast, and they can lean on the fact that that sign's there, it's in a, somebody's residence, somebody's yard, we've mentioned it several times about having it removed, and it's, it's a hazard, it's hazard to our children, we wouldn't want it to take a tragedy before that would be addressed. There are signs that are, for trees need to be trimmed, and so that we can see the signs, there's, are some pretty bad potholes that could cause accidents that do make you go off the road when you're driving, and, I mean, they're very bad, they're not just minor, and they're getting worse and worse and worse. Can we somehow look forward to in the future getting some of these roads fixed, not only for us to be able to drive through some of the roads, but for the safety of our members? That's all I have to say, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hi, good evening, my name is Joel Munoz, I live here in Pixley, 682 East Court, I'm also an employee here at Pixley School, I am the Director of Maintenance and Operations here, so I get to drive School Street to come to work every day, and just another area that I was hoping that maybe the board would consider is just a small patch of road just north of School Street, north of Court Street, on School Street. Our buses, our transportation department travels that, I don't know, maybe five or six times a day, they're transporting, you know, probably over a thousand kids, and it really does wreak havoc on our transportation department, not only, not only that, but that area, because of both schools, there's a lot of traffic congestion, so there is a lot of traffic in that area, at least a hundred and, a hundred and eighty-four days a year. So that's just an area I would like to point out, I do know that public works is extremely expensive, and I do appreciate the, your commitment to Pixley, but that, just an area that I would like to point out that I didn't notice on the map, hopefully we can bring a little attention to it, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, sure. Any other public comments? Mr. Wong?
I'm back. I would like to address a couple of the issues that the Town Council has mentioned, I, I do know about the one that is just right over here, that it does need some work, I did drive that, and we are aware of that, and as we do Pine, I would take care of that one also. I did fail to mention that earlier when I was up here, so we are going to be, be doing that one. Another thing is, yes, there are potholes, and I understand, I think Hernan's group here in Group Two is handling a lot of that, that he has a list of roads that we will be doing, and this is a good start as we go forward with. For the time being, yes, we will patch, blade, as we get through this, hopefully in time we can pick up the, the more busier roads or the roads that are very important to the community also. We try to do the best that we can with what we got, and we do have more things going on with us, our crew has gotten a little bigger, and that would help out, we do have a lot of territory that we do have to cover, and understand that, but in time, I would like to work as close as I've had in the past, that we can look at these a little closer and get these things done to the, more of the satisfaction of the council, okay?
And I think S B one funding is going to add money, over eleven million dollars each year, to the road department's budget that wasn't there prior to it, so regardless of what your opinions may be.
Yes.
It is here to stay, and that is additional money that can be used specifically on road maintenance.
Definitely so, you know, first thing came with Measure R, Measure R was a big help. Of course, we have our H U D A funds also, but those tends to shrink more and more, you know, based on how much we get, and people are driving more fuel-efficient cars, which is the reason why S B one has come in, come into play here. So with that in mind, do I see more in roads, more and more roads being done? Yes, I really do. Does it take a little bit of time to get there? Yes, it, it does also, but I do think we're going in the right direction going forward, and try to get as much as we can done.
I have a quick question.
I just, on the S B one, I think it's important to note that we're also anticipating receiving additional, more revenue this year, and it's supposed to plateau or, or slow down in another year or so, as far as the, the annual growth, but as part of S B one, there's also a inflation inflator that was, so it's not necessarily stagnant, granted, that doesn't, that should just help with the rising cost of construction, I don't know that it necessarily means that there, more roads will be built, but, but it should at least maintain what we're able to do.
All right, so the question that I have goes back to what this lady said about material, so have we been using different material, because, again, this is a question that has been asked to me in my district as well with the roads, whether or not we've gone to a different material that doesn't last as long, but stretches kind of the supply versus material that may last longer but is more expensive, can you touch on some of that?
Yeah, I can touch on some of that, we have two methods of filling potholes, one is what you see, where we fill the hose up, we clean it out, we tack it, we put this type of glue right on the edges, and we glue that back in. At times, depending on the weather, sometimes they tend to last a little longer, and sometimes they don't. Are they permanent? Well, no, they're not permanent. Then we also have the other method where it just squirts out a lot of small rock, that tends to hold a lot better, and we have three of those machineries that is all around the county, so those are the methods, there are times, yes, we do have to go back, they do hold up for a period of time, and sometimes they're longer, sometimes they are shorter. So I do appreciate that when people do call me, we, we try to get back out there. Do we have a lot of potholes? Yes, we do, but are, do I think that we're making a bit of an effort to get towards, not as bad, it's getting there, but each year, each month, as you see the hose that we do, I mean, we have thousands and thousands of hoses that we, we address, so it's, it's an ongoing thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? I, just for the sake of those Pixley residents that are here, I, I just want to commend Supervisor Vanderpoel, he's a great advocate for your community, and I, you know, in speaking for my experience on the board, I think that this map actually shows on the Board, I think that this map actually shows a tremendous amount of investment by the county into this community, more so than any of my unincorporated communities that I, I could say that's happened over the last two or three years. So, you know, and Supervisor Vanderpoel, make sure he works with staff. Staff is, regardless of who's calling, they've always been very responsive for each of us, and so I have no doubt that, that you guys and your issues will be addressed and continue to bring those up at the Town Council. That's, that's a great forum to, to, you know, bring issues to the table to, to help get some solutions.
Definitely so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to Item 41. Receive a presentation on burning roman candles and all the other fun stuff, especially in foothill communities. Burn baby burn, something, no, sorry, wrong presentation, I guess.
All right. Yeah, that's on page seven. Good evening, everybody. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the personnel from the Veterans Service Offices. I appreciate everything you do for our veterans. It's very, very, very thankful. The day I look forward to every year, the 5th of July.
Job security.
It is, and there's a few things that I'll just cover. I don't know if we've done this for the Board in recent history, so I thought I'd just cover this, and I'll put the brief in briefing. I know we've had a long meeting. There are two ways to buy fireworks. One of our 32 permitted booths within the county, or the illegal way. If it doesn't have a seal, state fire marshal's seal, notice one L in state fire marshal, no two Ls, it is illegal. Anything that leaves the ground, safe and sane that are modified. So if you have a Piccolo Pete that has been ratcheted, that is illegal. So, very, very important.
How do you do that, Chief?
You know, I've heard through training seminars that, I grew up in Woodlake, you know how to do that. But there are different ways to modify things. Anything that's modifiable is illegal, and the sanctions are very serious in this day and age. And, and it's not to try and go out and pinch people for fines, it's to try and prevent accidents from happening, because most of these accidents happen to children. So far, we've done some extra planning for this fourth. We have some extra staffing on at some of our stations that will undoubtedly be called out, additional staffing at some of our target areas where we've had previous activity. Our fireworks booth inspections, very, very important. We have a legal selling time as per state codes and regulations from June 28th to July 6th. Don't know that they do a lot of business on the 5th and 6th. Most of that is done July 3rd to the 4th. And just getting out there once we re-inspect, make sure everybody's safe to operate, and then checking back to make sure there's no selling to minors or any other activities. This year, we are going to do a couple of enforcement operations. We're teaming up with the Sheriff's Department, two of our investigators, and with the Sheriff's Office team to go out and do some enforcement, completely approved by the Board and County Council. We did some of this last year, but we're going to target some of our areas that we've had problems with. 2018 was relatively calm, over a three-year average, doing 15, 16, and 17. Most of those calls were beyond what we had. Last year, we had our normal run-of-the-mill calls, 34 medical aids, traffic accidents, 15 fire-related calls, 14 fireworks-related calls, and other agency assist. As we're going through some of this, the, the area of time between 9:00 PM and 1:00 AM are just utter chaos. We went into Larry City twice last year during the fourth. We went into Visaya City three times, and it's, it's a great relationship, but it's a lot of reciprocity with all the fire service agencies, so when our resources are depleted, we can rely on them. And Cal Fire and all the supporting agencies through the mutual aid system have been very cooperative and very giving of all their resources, as we've done. Last year, we ticketed 10 people, and those are $1,000 fines. So they are, we're trying to make sure that people, we don't have this recidivism where people do this day in and day out. Some of the things we seized, and last year, we did see some, hopefully, we'll get a lot more this year, were some morning glories, sunflowers, bottle rockets, the supervisor, Chair Crocker, was describing. But some of the modifications that could be done on just safe and sane, once you put duct tape on a sparkler, can create some very detonation, some pretty lethal doses. And what are those doing? Those are usually in the hands of children, so you want to make sure that those are taken away. Some quick fireworks stats from NFBA. Be safe. The world, according to Charlie, go to a public show. Do not use consumer fireworks. I know fireworks is a huge fundraiser with a lot of our nonprofits, and it's very good for them. They have a lot of money they make in a very, very short period of time, but it's best to go to a public show. Keep a close eye on children at events, keep a close eye on children all the time. Firework safety, just kind of the demographic of that, as you look up to the chart there, Supervisor Shucklian, males account for 74% of fire-related injuries.
Shocker, shocker. News flash.
These things do happen. There's kind of a demographic on things, so we care about all people, but it's really the pediatrics and the younger patients we have. Even the smart guy is 9% with the glasses and the male pattern baldness. And again, the injuries, most of them are hands or fingers because you're not letting go of the device soon enough. You have a lot of injuries, there are eye, head, most of your hands and fingers cause about 36% of those. We have about 18,500 of those that occur in the United States.
Did you work with Roland Hill to put this presentation?
I just used his likeness.
Trunk or other.
Yes. We won't talk about those soft tissue injuries. But obviously, some very, very lethal things, something that seems pretty benign and harmless can have some very tragic ramifications. Best practices.
Glow sticks.
If we, everybody used common sense, I'd be an accountant. But, and people with the alcohol, alcohol consumption, public shows, there's always safe alternatives. I know glow sticks are kind of boring, but public shows, glow sticks, that's where it's at.
Don't say that to a rave. I don't know if they think that they're boring.
July 3rd, we have three fireworks shows, Visaya Country Club, the Rawhide Game, the Tulare, at the Tulare County Fairground, the Quanis do a great job with that. We have the oldest fireworks show in Tulare County, the Exeter Lions Club on July 4th at Dobson Field. So there are some choices out there.
Daniel.
What should you do if you find illegal fireworks? Do not set them off, Mr. Chair. What you do is, you drop them off at a fire station, you call 911 if they're an aggregate amount. We will take them, we do a disposal at the end of the season, a very legal, controlled disposal, and the big thing-
In the Golden Trout Wilderness.
Not in the Gold, not in any FRA or SRA areas. Fireworks, for the most part, and there are cutout zones, are illegal east of the Frye and Current Canal. So anything east of the Frye and Current Canal, you have so much wildland potential that it's, it's very problematic for us. So any state responsibility area, Cal Fire, state forest, state demonstration forests, or the FRA, the Forest Service lands or BLM lands. So, the fireworks in a nutshell, and again, I'm trying to get through this very quickly, and I know you have other items to do. Limited alcohol consumption, competent adult supervision, utilize safe and sane fireworks if you're not attending a public show. The goal is zero injuries and zero fires. I'll entertain any questions. I have staff here, Captain Rosa, Chief Rintory, unless they fake the call.
They're still waiting.
Lieutenant Alves are all back there to answer any questions.
Well, I, just a little story, story time. This is not confession. I'm gonna, I'm gonna blame somebody else. Exactly. Why do you gotta talk about our assemblyman that way? At the last RCRC, or not the last RCRC meeting, the one in Death Valley, one of the members might have lit off a firework that went up into the air in a national park. That was fun. So, yeah, that's a little bit of a more serious offense, but that didn't, I don't recommend that.
I'm just taking some notes.
What was the name?
That wasn't me. I'll tell you after the meeting.
Chairman Crocker and I were wondering, is there a statute of limitations, like, in your crazy youth, you did use some of these?
You knew somebody.
We were comparing, you know, black cats and all that, you know?
For most felonies, it's seven years.
We're good.
Man, I don't know. That may not be enough. You might be.
I recently went to my 35th reunion, and I have a buddy that has a scar right here. What does he say? Remember that time? Exactly. There's, there's a thin line with firefighters.
But I tried to just do it in District 5, though.
But wishing everybody is safe and sane 4th of July, I will be available, and hopefully, everybody will be on their best behavior, so.
Any questions, comments, members of the Board or public? Thank you for the presentation. That's all right.
So regarding the fireworks, Paula Mastis from Dibden, dairies. It's like, you can sit in town and just watch them all throughout the country.
Right.
And, I mean, but you guys can't be everywhere, so like, what, what are our options? Me personally, I have three chihuahuas. So when everybody's all happy about fireworks, I'm in the house. Like, no, it's just a boom. It's okay.
Chihuahua is good.
I mean, we can call, but can anything? Sorry.
No, thank you for asking that question. Yes, call 911, we'll send somebody out in a timely manner. Granted, you're on the phone with 911, along with 100,000 other people. So, but we will get out there. We have multiple pets in the Norman household, I get it. So, and yeah, get the name of that dairy, and we'll get on it.
Yeah.
So 911 is the preferred phone call for illegal-
If you see a firework incident in progress, call 911.
Okay.
So, that way, we can get resources out in a timely manner.
Very good.
So, and you're right, we can't get to all of them, but we will make a best, good-faith effort, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Oh, one other public comment, sorry.
I know fireworks are a lot of fun. I am a nurse, I used to be an orthopedic nurse, so I do want to share with you that I've had more than one incident of a young man degloving his hand because he didn't let go soon enough. Very sad, because that's a lifelong injury from, of a young person. So just make sure that the kids aren't involved as much as possible, and that they're, especially not drinking, they're teens. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we don't want any Darwin Awards around here. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go to Item 42, request from Human Resources Department to approve salary increases for un-reps. We'll just say that.
Good evening, Chairman Crocker, members of the Board. Rhonda Schustrom, Human Resources Director. The item before you is a request to approve salary increases for unrepresented employees in bargaining units 9, 10, 11, 19, 20, and 21, and other compensation and benefit changes, revisions to the personnel rules, and also to the Section 125 Benefits Plan document. Specifically, I think I need to read in the request for the record that you're being asked to approve for unrepresented employees in the bargaining units that I mentioned, a 2% salary increase effective July 7th, 2019, and a 2% salary increase effective July 5th, 2020. I do want to say for the record, this does not apply to county-elected officials, nor does it apply to the Board of Supervisors. The second request or recommendation is to sunset the sickly buyback program with our last payout to employees occurring in February 2020. Request number three is the continuation of the county's matching contribution for the deferred comp program of $1 by the county for every $4 that an employee contributes, which was up to a match, a maximum of $1,500, and the recommendation is to expand that for unrepresented employees to a match of $1,750 per calendar year, beginning with January 1, 2020. Continuation of the funding for the minimum benefit amount for our health insurance programs, and specifically, the county is being asked to contribute an additional $100 per pay period, for 24 pay periods, for employees selecting, who select employees plus spouse, employee plus child, or employee plus family coverage, effective with the 2020 Health Plan year. The additional contribution of $100 per pay period would continue in the 2021 Health Plan year, and this is being requested to address employees who have dependents and families on our health plan coverages. The next item or recommendation is to increase the life insurance from $10,000 to $30,000 for unrepresented employees, effective January 1, 2020. And that excludes department heads, assistant department heads, who have a higher life insurance currently. So this would be everyone below assistant department heads. reinstating the Code of Ethics policy for the Health and Human Services Agency for the unrepresented employees. We are also have this on the table with other groups who have, where we have to meet and confer on. Revisions to Personnel Rule 13, the Employee Grievance Procedure, and Rule 14, the Equal Employment Opportunity Discrimination Sexual Harassment Policy. And many of the changes that were made, being recommended for these two policies are a lot of language cleanups, as well as cleanups from recent legislation. Implementation, I'm sorry, revision to the Section 125 Benefits Plan Revised and Restated Document. And again, these are cleanup items resulting from a review from an outside council. We have not done updates to the 125 Plan for some time, so this was adding things that should now be in the plan, as well as cleaning up some language. Implementation of the Medical Monitoring Program for unrepresented classes, specifically in the environmental health arena. And then the last item, I'm asking to have that pulled, I'm pulling the DMV pull program from this request, so that it can be reviewed further and potentially to come back to the Board at a later time. The estimated cost for the salary increases will result in approximately $3,137,232 over the two years, and the increased benefit cost is $734,000 for both 2019, 20, and 2021 budgets. This does affect for unrepresented employees, an allocated number of 732 positions. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to attempt to address them.
Any questions from members of the Board?
I don't have a question, just a comment. Rhonda, what do we do to encourage employees to participate in the deferred compensation? Because, you know, I think that's a, a great program that's offered, and I don't know if people realize that, you know, if you put $100 in, it's not really $100 coming out of your pay because of the pre-tax. So, just wondering what we do to encourage folks to participate?
We, I happen to be on the Defined Contribution Committee, and we do educational articles in like our grapevine, as well as on our websites, and trying to encourage the employees to participate. We've reached out to our department heads and have talked to them and asked them to encourage their employees as well. And then we have brought it up at the bargaining table, because it is a nice, it, it's free money from the county. And we, the county is recognizing that if, if an employee participates, they're acknowledging that, and they're putting in money as well. And it is a good program, as well as deferring tax, taxes, and ultimately, you're going- And ultimately, you're going to receive the amount that you put in and receive the amount that the county puts in.
Thank you.
Just clarification, that's the Deferred Compensation Committee that you serve on, right?
Yeah, it's the defined.
Defined Contribution, Defined Compensation. It's referred to both. Defined Benefit. Deferred Compensation.
And what's the committee name? That was the question. It's deferred, it's a deferred compensation.
Deferred Compensation.
Deferred Compensation, yeah.
Right. Not Defined Contribution Committee. Any other questions, comments from the board, members of the public? Please state your name and address for the record.
Members of the board, my name is Brenda Broker. I'm a supervising deputy district attorney. And these are, these are also deputy district, supervising deputy district attorneys. We're here to ask the board to not approve that 2% salary increase for 2019 and 2020. We are unrepresented. We are part of bargaining unit 20. So we are asking, as far as we go, that it is not approved tonight. We've provided the clerk with handouts with exhibits attached, which shows what we are requesting. Mr. Ward has already presented this information to Mr. Britt previously regarding supervising deputy district attorneys. We are requesting this year to have a 6.5% raise. And the following year, another 6.5% raise. And then, item three, we're requesting a set amount, which Mr. Ward agreed. And let Mr. Britt know that we have a position in our office that Mr. Ward is willing to vacate and take that money and in order to provide the supervisors with a raise, a one-time raise. Also, we're requesting 64 hours of administrative leave. We don't get any overtime. We get six weeks a year. We've been here over 11 years. County Council gets six weeks a year, plus 40 hours. We work a lot of overtime. I've been with the office going on 16 years. I supervise a unit, but I also do trials. I've done numerous death penalty trials. Those trials can take up to four months in court. I'm working about 100 hours a week, minimum, only getting paid for 40. We do a lot of overtime. We don't see our family. We're here for public safety. We keep the community safe. We see people that have been, you know, victimized or in the worst position possible. We have to deal, we deal with these people. We show them respect. We are asking for some respect. My career has been with victims that have been children. Children that have been sexually abused, physically abused, children that have been tortured, children that have been murdered. And when I've got to deal with families like that, it takes a lot out of me. It takes a lot out of my family. And we're asking, instead of just that 2% that you take time and you review our memo and our attachments and you look at it, the website itself is antiquated. We, our job description is, no, it's not even accurate. I've attached, it's Exhibit A. That shows our real job description. Exhibit B shows our salary, how we're so underpaid compared to county council. Exhibit C, it shows we just get our six weeks a year, no overtime. And if you look at Exhibit, let's see, Exhibit E, that is a resolution that was passed by the board in June 3, 1997. It's Resolution 97-0047. That gave county council that additional 40 hours, along with the six weeks that they get each year. So they actually get seven weeks, where we get six weeks. We put in a lot of overtime. We do a lot of good for this community. And we're always told that, you know, just supervising attorneys, we're not. We're in the same unit as county council and everybody, but we're not the same. And that's true, we're not, because prosecutors are different. We're held to a higher standard. In the state of California, we are held to a higher standard than any other licensed attorney here. Any civil attorney, any criminal defense attorney, we are actually becoming extinct. People do not want to be prosecutors anymore because of the legislation that's being passed in Sacramento, the State Board, all these different rules and laws that are going against prosecutors. We're trying to do our jobs, keep our community safe, be there for the victims and their families. And people don't want to be prosecutors anymore when they get out of law school. But we're here because we, we have a duty to help the people in this community and keep it safe. And let them know when a crime has happened that we're there for them. And I speak for myself, but also for everybody else, all the other supervisors. We work hard, and we'd like to have some respect. And we'd like to be, not just hand that 2% like we are each year. We'd like for you to take the time to review these documents and make a decision based on accurate information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Doug Rogers. I'm a supervising deputy DA here in Tulare County, bargaining unit 20, and a county employee for over 15 years. There is a turnover crisis facing Valley prosecutors' offices. By way of comparison for fiscal year 2018 and 2019, Fresno County DA's office saw a 10.9% turnover rate. During the same period, Stanislaus County experienced a 25% attrition rate. Merced County had a 27.3% turnover percentage. Here in Tulare County, our office saw a 26% turnover rate for this fiscal year. This figure is double last year's rate of 12.7% and nearly triple the rate from two years ago. We are seeing attorneys leave our office in unprecedented numbers, due largely to more attractive salaries in other jurisdictions. While attorneys leaving our office at entry and mid-level positions poses a significant concern, those vacating management roles drains our organization of invaluable institutional knowledge and places the safety of our community at risk. By adopting the reasonable salary and benefit increases that Brenda just spoke of, the board will be competitively compensating some of our most experienced prosecutors and providing them and those who aspire to seek these positions an incentive to stay with our office for the long term. I appreciate the board's thoughtful consideration of our requests. I'll be followed by supervising deputy district attorney, Rick Tripp. Thank you.
Good evening. I, my name's Rick Tripp. I'm a supervising deputy district attorney. I've been with the office for 13 years. Prior to that, I did some other legal work, so I've been an attorney for 18 years. I grew up in this community. I think it's a great place to live. I've never wanted to leave. The last 13 years, I've valued the service that I've committed to the DA's office, trying to help people and trying to assure that people that commit crimes are held accountable. The burden is getting pretty difficult because of the many changes in the law. Sacramento has made it challenging for us to make prosecuting criminals more difficult. And what you learn through the legal system is the more experience you have, the better off you are. One of the things I did over the last year is I filed an extradition warrant for a gentleman who, I call him a gentleman, he murdered a man in his home. And he went to Mexico. In order to pull him out of there, and we're still doing that, you have to file an extradition warrant with the Department of Justice of International Affairs in Washington, DC. That can't be done by somebody who's been working for two or three years or four years. It has to be done with someone that has a vast number of experience with not only homicide cases, but filling out affidavits, different types of legal motions. And that's one of the things I worked on last year to bring this person back here and make sure that he's held accountable for the crime he committed in our community. And so what we're asking, what we're talking about here tonight is just having the opportunity to point out that we're lower on the scale. We can all acknowledge that. And what we need are experienced attorneys to go out and fight these cases because the fight is getting harder. We have to do more. We have to do more discovery. We're being held accountable at a different level. They passed laws actually, the last few years, to prosecute attorneys, district attorneys, if they don't do certain things in the law. And so we have to watch and be directed and guided by a system that is becoming challenging by the minute. But we're committed to that. We all love our job. The people behind me all love what they're doing. But the difficulty in having to do this job is, is, is becoming a burden. And we just want to be compensated for our work. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Underwood. I'm a supervising deputy district attorney. I've been with the office for a little over 11 years now. And what I wanted to talk to you about is just being treated fairly. What we gave to you, and Brenda talked about, is Exhibit A. It's our job description, our duties as supervising deputy district attorneys. What's online right now does not represent what we actually do. What we gave to you and in front of you is actually our job duties. A 2% increase is a slap in the face to us. Right now, county council chiefs, they work hard and deserve their pay. But we do the same work, have the same responsibilities, and we deserve to be paid the same, too. The chief county council makes $38,579 more than supervising deputy district attorneys. Chief and a supervisor is the same position. Same qualifications, education requirements, and we each supervise a division comprised of Level 5 attorneys or below. It does not make any sense that you call them chief deputy district, or chief county council and us supervising deputy district attorneys and pay us so differently. Vocabulary and titles do not have meaning.
No, no, let's take public comment, easy, Deanne.
Vocabulary and titles do not have meaning. You have to look at the job responsibilities to compare. And that's what we provided you with tonight, our job responsibilities, what they currently are. We do trials. We do not send our trials out to different attorneys, different companies. We do our trials. The fact that county council is paying more represents, the board of supervisors, gives an appearance of bias. It gives the appearance that county council pays its own supervising attorneys more because hopes to have higher skilled, higher qualified attorneys. But says supervising deputy district attorneys that serving victims of crime in Tulare County are less important and worth less. Although this may not be true, and not be the intention of the county and the board of supervisors, in reality, it creates that appearance. The mission of the county is to provide the residents of Tulare County with quality services to improve and sustain the region's safety, economic well-being, and quality of life. Tulare County government strives to earn the trust, respect, and support of its residents through collaboration, fair, and effective service. The unequal pay for supervising deputy district attorneys and this 2% increase violates the mission of the county and does not promote the improvement for its citizen's safety. We just ask that you deny this 2%. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the board. My name is John Slaney, and I am a supervising deputy district attorney in the office. Been with the Tulare County District Attorney's Office for 16 years now. And as the others here, I will tell you, we love our job. We love our job because of what we give to the community. What I'd like to talk to you about tonight is public safety and how we work with our justice partners and the justice system. Really, when we're looking at the justice system, there's three critical components. There's our law enforcement partners. And our law enforcement partners here in Tulare County are some of the best in the state, some of the best in the nation. There's also the prosecution team, which here is our office, the district attorney's office. And then there's the courts. If any one of those systems breaks down, the system itself fails. It's essentially like a wheel. When it's all round and working together, it rolls fine. But if it gets a flat in any one part of that tire, whether it be the law enforcement side, the prosecution side, or the courts, the wheel just doesn't roll. And so when you're looking at the proposal we put forth tonight, I'm going to ask you to vote no on number 42, on item number 42. Take a good look at the proposal we've provided you with tonight, that I understand most of you have seen already. And I'm going to ask you again to vote no on number 42. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Madam Counselor, did you want to have a brief comment?
I did just want to clarify, there is one DA, one county council. There's one chief deputy district attorney, and there are five chief deputy county councils. The supervising attorneys are not on the same level as the chief deputies, just because we're in the same bargaining, if you look at what salary band we're in. The chief deputies are the assistant district attorney, or chief deputy district attorney. At some point in time, you had two assistant DAs and you added a chief deputy above that. We've never had supervising attorneys. We're team-based, and our management structure is very flat. You should not confuse that with the idea that you're a level with the chiefs. Our chiefs are a level with the chief deputy district attorney. And that's why we're in the same salary band as the assistant. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
If we're in the same bargaining year, it doesn't have anything to do with this.
Any questions, comments from members of the board?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of questions. I want to look over to Jason. By the board approving this tonight, if the board chooses to do so, does that preclude you from addressing any salary issues or concerns, potentially classifications being out of comparison with their peers through the budget process?
No, Mr. Chair, I'm Mr. Vice Chair, that does not preclude that. It, the board, or the CAO has typically always addressed targeted increases or equities for those classifications that are determined sort of out of balance with our salary surveys during the budget process, which will happen in September.
And if I could also add, if you delay it just for them, they're not going to get their 2% until later because it's never retroactive. So it actually is to their benefit to take the 2 now, which goes into effect earlier, and address equities later.
And my question to Jason is, have you identified any particular groups for equity increases in the budget process? You don't have to be specific. Have you already done so?
Yes, we already have those identified.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Crocker, if I could also add, what we generally do as part of the final budget process is we, during that time, we also bring in job classifications that need to be updated, as well as new classifications. And we, I believe, both Mr. Britt and I have had discussions with the district attorney and the public defender and the child support director. All three of them have unrepresented attorneys in their office. And we have had discussions about the job classifications needing to be updated, and we are open to that. It's a process that is done in September as part of the final budget.
Thank you for that clarification. And Mr. Chair, I do want to also say that I appreciate our supervising district attorneys coming this evening and making the comments that you did. It's great to hear from you, and I really do appreciate your dedication to public safety and to the community. I really do think you provide a very, very valuable service. By moving this forward tonight is not a slap in the face, in my opinion. I'm in support of moving forward with the item as presented by staff. You know, I think that there is a venue in place to address some of the concerns that have been brought up by your group. And I believe that our CAO is going to be doing that in the budget process in coordination with your boss, the district attorney, who also is a tremendous advocate for you and for the people, the men and women in his department. So I want you to know that your concerns are not falling on deaf ears. By the board pushing this forward tonight, this is not a slap in the face. Go out in the general public and ask anyone, do they see a 2% or any guaranteed percentage increase every year? They don't. That's not a slap. It's an increase to your pay. And there is going to be an effort to address the concerns that you've brought forth. So because of that, I want to thank you again for your service. I want to thank all of our employees for the work. I want to thank all of our employees for the work that they do here in Tulare County, whether you're in the district attorney's office or any of the other bargaining units that are mentioned here in the unrepresented classification. Your work is appreciated by the county, and I think any increase is a gesture by the board of supervisors and by the county to recognize that work and to support the employees that work for the county and help deliver our missions day in and day out. So with that, Mr. Chair, if there's no further comment, I would move for approval.
Any other comments or second?
A second?
We have a motion, a second. Motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Shaklin. Additional comments, questions? I just want to make a -- I'd like to make a few comments before we vote. And I do appreciate everyone coming here tonight. You know, I know that it's the last item. It's an evening, it's a weekday. Appreciate all the work you do. I want to echo the comments, or one of the comments that Supervisor Vanderpool made in that the district attorney is a great advocate for you guys. And so he has been communicating on a regular basis for months with our CAO, as well as our county council. I know she got a little passionate. It's something she's passionate about with her employees, and as well as our public defender. And so all three of the groups that have attorneys represented and within their jurisdiction, they've actually worked together, I think, to try and advocate for appropriate pay and salaries as it goes towards this. And we've heard from that, and so it hasn't gone on deaf ears. Just, you know, this is the first time we've heard from you all directly, but just know that we've heard throughout the last several months from whether your own district attorney or from some of your other colleagues and other groups. So but I will agree that I don't think that this is necessarily the end of the discussion. This is what we would consider a COLA, cost of living adjustment. But if there are some equities that need to be made, then that will happen in another couple of months or so at the budget process. So with that, we do have a motion, a second. Any other comments, questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Crocker?
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Aye.
Supervisor Shaklin?
Aye.
Supervisor Valero?
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And now we'll go to item 43. Any wish for any future agenda items by members of the board? Seeing none, we -- county council, do we have need for closed session?
There are remaining items on agenda, items A and B, and those are off the agenda.
Very good. Thank you for attending tonight, and we will see you in two weeks back at the Visalia Convention Center. Have a great Fourth of July.
Safe and sane.